And all of our council members are here and our council executive and our clerk is here. So I'll call the meeting to order. And by the way, look at this gavel this time.
You really mean business.
There we go.
Harbor free.
What do you use that rubber handle for anyway?
Well, anything that I need to hit with a rubber melon.
For wife.
Yeah. Okay.
Leave a bruise.
Doesn't cut the skin as easily. Anyway, uh, let's start with an opening pledge. And by the way, uh, Janine, my wife wanted me to tell you that, uh, he loves me being home when we have these, these meetings this way on Zoom. But what she misses is the candy that I bring home to her that you provide for us. That, that's the one negative part for her. Anyway, let's have an opening. Uh, Councilwoman, uh, Barbara Tidwell will provide our opening and pledge for us. So Barbara.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to start by saying thank you to the health department and everyone that's been involved with this pandemic and how well that we've been, uh, informed. And Janine, thank you for putting those status updates out for us. It's been great. I've appreciated it. Um, I think we are one of the best counties in the state and in the nation for, um, keeping things updated and doing what we need to be doing. And I'm very grateful for everyone that's participating in that. So thank you. I'll finish my, um, comments in the form of a prayer. Our heavenly father, we're grateful to be gathered here in this county council meeting. We're grateful for all those who are attending this meeting and grateful for their talents and the abilities. We're grateful for this beautiful county that we live in, in this great United States of America, and for all that has been given to us by thy hand. We pray heavenly father that we might have thy spirit to be with us as we hold this meeting, that we would make wise decisions, that we would be able to, be able to do what is best for the people in this county, and that we would have wisdom and look to the future to provide for those generations who do come after us. And these things we say in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
If you'll please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Okay, I'm looking for the flag. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic which stands. One nation.
Nation under God. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome.
I presume everyone's had an opportunity to review, uh, the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
I'll make that motion.
All right, three seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Also, our minutes from the last minute of April fourteenth. Uh, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I noticed on the councilman, uh, the council reports that I was muted and I guess that was fine. I thought I, I thought I'd shared my support for, uh, Gina, her senior and all of them. And but, uh, I was probably on mute, so that's fine.
You did say that, so. Heard you.
Can we add that in?
Yeah, we probably need to.
That would be fine.
Yeah, he did say it.
Yeah, I remember. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Get with that one correction.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, any follow up to the minutes? All right, Craig, it's, uh, time for your report to us. Uh, we'll turn the, the, uh, microphone over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. So to start with, I do have an appointment and, uh, you should have that or I should have seen that on your, the information that was sent. We've got an opening at the, on the Avon Cemetery District, uh, Board of Trustees, and we would like to recommend Mark Williams to be appointed to serve an unexpired term that will expire on the thirty first of December of two thousand twenty one.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Uh, you have also the financial reports that have been sent out to you. And, um, I would like to just maybe give an update on a couple of things. I saw that several of you were on the twelve thirty, uh, Zoom meeting that we had with, uh, Lieutenant Governor. And also I assume that many of you listened in on the, the government live news conference where he talked about the state is going to move from the high or the red category to the moderate or orange category as of Friday, May first. And so what that means to the county is that it looks like we will be moving forward with opening up some of our restaurants and other businesses. That means that, um, the maximum number of individuals that should be together gathered together in a group is twenty instead of ten. And, uh, the health department is going to be tasked with certain, uh, outlining, outlining, I guess you could say, or, um, defining or further defining some of the things that we might need to look at here on the local level. I have been meeting with the health department director and Commissioner Jeff Scott and Commissioner Bill Cox from Rich County. Uh, on a daily basis, we've had a noon call in every day this week so that we can, uh, so we can be updated or keep updated on the situation COVID nineteen here in the, in the county. Um, the last, kind of an interesting fact, the last ten days, we have only had four new cases in the county and all of, or in the district, and all of those have been traceable. So we do know where the individuals as was, uh, contracted the, the, uh, virus. And so I think we're in a situation where with the proper, uh, precautions, we can open up a little bit more. And I feel like it's, it's appropriate for us at this time. The governor did state that there may be some areas of the state who could, uh, move up to the yellow phase if they haven't had any cases and, and felt like they could move forward and, and maybe will be there in the next week or two. Hopefully by two weeks, we can move into that yellow phase. There's also.
Ted, Craig, we're going from, from red to yellow. Are you meaning in green?
No, no, red. There is a four phases to the phased guidelines in this, uh, Utah Leads Together two point oh. And, um, I think I sent that out in an email to the council members. Um, but if you haven't seen it, I will be sure and send that out.
So it goes from, uh, it goes from red to amber to yellow to green?
Yeah, yeah. Red, red is the, uh, high risk. Yellow is the, or red, orange is the moderate risk. Yellow is the no risk and green is the new normal, I guess is the way they're saying it. So we are hoping to, uh, to be able to make a step down to, to the orange Friday, by Friday. The yellow, we'll see how that works out. And then, uh, and then the green will be the, the new normal as we move forward. So I, I'm, uh, I'm hoping that, that by, you know, by Friday, we'll be able to see our restaurants open up. We have actually been kind of giving them a, a heads up that this action was going to be taking place. We, we had heard that it was going to be taking place. So many of our restaurants are already opening up. I did talk to one of our restaurants. He said that he makes a new food order about every, uh, three times a week. And so, or three days ahead of when he feels like he needs it. So we are giving the restaurant operators enough time that they can, can bring their workforce back, that they can start to prepare to welcome the public again, so.
What did you do for restrictions on that?
On the restaurants?
Yes. Uh, is it six foot tables or whatever, like we talked about?
Yeah, it's actually tables have to be ten feet apart. But, you know, so that will allow about six feet for individuals to be apart. And so, and then also they're instructed to wear face masks. Um, I'm not sure if they're going to be required to take the temperature of individuals when they come into the restaurant. But I'm sure that the, the staff and others that work with the public, I believe, I believe they will be required to have their temperature taken. And of course, if, if they're ill, they won't be able to, to work.
I was, I felt chastised when I was listening to the governor today. If I've been one who has resisted wearing a mask when I go into the stores, but I have determined to repent and start doing that.
And that's, that's kind of how I felt. Sometimes I do, sometimes I don't. Um, Cheryl was saying how she feels, she felt the same way. She felt like she was chastised for not wearing her mask, but I think.
We did too.
Yeah.
Well, you know, that mask only protects you from giving it to somebody else. It doesn't protect you from getting it.
Yeah.
Just so.
That, that's true, that's true.
Well, I guess that's worth something.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the, uh, we'll be in coordination with the Better Health Department. I believe if we, if we try to open things up any further or if we need to make further restrictions and maybe close things down, then we need to contact the, uh, state government, state health department through, um, through General Tar, or not General Tar, but, um, I'm trying to remember his name now. The individual that used to be the, the, uh, general for the, the National Guard that is working with the governor's office. So we, we need to contract, contact them and work through the health department if we want to make any changes to that directive. So I don't foresee that right now, but we, we could see them coming down the future. And there's always the possibility that we could, with, if, with a, an outbreak, we could move back into the red or the high risk. So it's going to depend a lot on the actions of the public moving forward and how much they're willing to wear their masks and to, to follow the social distancing guidelines and sanitizing and the good hygiene, uh, guidelines that we've been given and, and instructed for the past couple of months. So.
Is it, isn't it kind of hard to eat with your mask on?
Yeah.
Depends on whether you're having a soup or something and sucking a straw.
Stick the straw.
Restaurant with your mask on, you go, okay, this is gonna be good.
Yeah. So maybe that will be a way to keep the servers from eating your food before it comes to your table. They have to wear their mask.
Yeah, they do good.
Yeah, they will, they will. So the, uh, yes, go ahead.
I say anything else?
Yeah, I've, I've got a department head meeting I scheduled tomorrow. And I'm planning our, the, uh, the local direction that I had given was that we would open the county offices back up on May fourth, which is next Monday. And I was, I was thinking I would just hold to that. But to avoid confusion, we may need to open up our county offices, uh, this Friday. And so I'm going to discuss that with the department heads before I make that final decision. So I think with the, uh, with the announcement by the governor, the public may, they may, uh, have the expectation that they can come back into the, the county offices. But even in the governor's directive going to, uh, going to the low risk or the moderate risk, excuse me, the moderate risk. Uh, he does say the county buildings will still remain closed and the DMV would be only open to appointments. Um, so, uh, that's something that will have to work out. But I, I do believe that we, we can open the county offices back up. I will clarify that, uh, before our department head meeting tomorrow. We are providing face masks for our county employees. The, the sheriff has been providing those. So I will be passing those out in the, in our department head meeting for those employees that, that, that need those that don't have access to them right now. Um, also, I know there's been a lot of progress made on our operations center for the road and the vegetation management department. So I was wondering about scheduling a meeting or scheduling a tour, a site visit within the next week or two, if, if you'd like to do that. We could possibly schedule something before our next council meeting, if you'd like, or, or at another time. And whatever is, uh, convenient for, for the council members. And if you'd like to go see that, I think it'd be a good idea to go out and, and, uh, take the council out to see that, so.
Didn't you send us a video somewhere? I saw a video. Maybe it was in the cash planning news.
Yeah.
Showed, showed where they were on the building and they were fixing the road and what they were doing.
Yeah, and they have, uh, sent out some new, some new, uh, pictures too that I just got yesterday. I'll forward that to the council.
Yeah.
Are you interested in getting together to do that?
I'd definitely like to do that. I think that would be really worthwhile.
I would like to.
Okay, we'll send out a.
Count me in on that.
Okay, we'll send out a poll as to when the best time would be and, and then hopefully we can get that arranged within the next week or two before our next council meeting. And so that is all I have to report right now.
Well, thank you, Craig.
Questions?
Any questions? Okay, we have no special items of interest. We don't have any department or committee reports. We do have some board of equalization matters, so we need a motion to move, uh, into the board of equalization.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
I beat John.
All in favor of moving into board of equalization? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now meeting as the board of equalization. We have, uh, two, uh, tax exemption requests. We'll have findings and determinations. The first one is IHC Health Services Incorporated for Logan Regional Hospital. There was some lengthy data provided for us and information that, uh, I presume everyone had a chance to look through those and, uh, determine or make a determination as to whether or not they qualify under the, the statutes of the law or the, uh, uh, property tax exemption on those specific properties for which they have applied for and, and, uh, and the personal property. Are, does anyone have any questions or concerns about the recommendations made by the, the, uh, by our, the board of adjustments?
Yeah, Paul and Gina went, they could tell us.
Yeah. How did you feel, Gina and Barbara?
Oh, I didn't go, I think it was Paul.
Paul went.
Oh.
Think that they do a lot of good stuff and I, I appreciated that we got, um, information from them about how much they give. I'll honestly say that I wish they did more, um, knowing, looking, being able to look at some of their tax returns. I feel like there's more they could do, but what they do is adequate to, um, make up for what they would pay in taxes. So, you know, I, I'm supportive of it.
You, you feel like though they are within them the, uh, parameters of the rules that make it possible for them to have a tax exemption?
Yes, yeah, I do.
I mean, that, that's what we're primarily concerned with is do these fit? Does this request fit within the statutes and regulations regarding tax exemptions? And that, that's what we need to determine, so.
With that said, I would move to we approve the tax exempt status of these two properties.
Okay, uh, let's, before you do that, Gordy, um, well, let's take them one at a time. Let's, IHC services, um, what, uh, is there a motion on just IHC services themselves?
That'll be okay for that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that, uh, and just say, sitting through that meeting, I think IHC did a, a, a great job this year of, uh, even giving us more insight into what they're doing, uh, for the community. Um, and especially with what we've got going on now, they're, they've, they've stepped up quite a bit. So I can, I can second that for sure.
All right, all in favor of approving, uh?
Carl?
Yes.
One, one question I had, and this is, there's like a hundred and four pages there to read, but I was just, uh, looking a lot of those. That donated portion that IHC donates, is that the, is that their billing or is that the allowed billing by average, uh, insurance companies? Yeah, there seems to be, there are, there's always two types of billing. There's what the insurance company allows and then there's what I see. Or is that the difference that they're donating? Is that, you know, it's kind of confusing because they can inflate that. They have the ability to inflate those numbers dramatically. Um, you know, by them just saying, hey, this is the billable services according to us. Uh, or this is the billable services according to the average of ninety percent of the insurance companies allow.
It's a billable services according to Medicare.
Medicare, okay, that, that was my question. That's what I, so there is a standard of what they can act right off, okay?
And, and depending on the area you live, it might be half as much here as it is in New York. This just depends on where you're hospitalist.
And I, I, I did not find that in there. I was just kind of curious about that, so thank you.
Well, uh, uh, and I'll, I'll just say, I've always had a problem with that. Uh, just by virtue of experience, we, uh, we, we had a, uh, a situation in our family where one of our family members needed some surgery and we lacked, because we had such a, you know, a high deductible, eight thousand dollar a year health plan. We said, we're, we're, we just want to, uh, um, pay this upfront, give us a quote on the hospital costs. It was an outpatient, well, it was in the hospital, but just a day long surgery in and out. And, uh, they quoted us, I don't know, I think it was three or four thousand dollars. So we paid that. And then I got a notice from the, the insurance company because they asked me to put on, uh, when we fill out the paperwork, they said, well, give us your insurance company also so that in case there's something that goes beyond what we're expecting, uh, we can bill that to the insurance company. So then I get a notice from my insurance company and they billed the insurance company twenty two thousand dollars. And so what they quoted us was three thousand, they billed the insurance company twenty two thousand. So then, yeah, I, I don't know how this works, but then did they say, okay, that, uh, nineteen thousand dollars differential, that was charitable care? Yeah, I don't know how this works, but there's always something funny going on with how insurance billings work and what they ca, what they bill and what they write off as to whether it's really legitimate write offs. And, and I, I confess, I have a problem with it. But, uh, just based on my limited experience, John, you're more.
Yeah, the, most of the write up, they have those that can't, won't pay a bill. That doesn't count as a charitable. When you go into the hospital emergency room and you say, I have no money, I have no insurance, they are obligated by law to treat you. That is charitable care.
And that, is that all they write off then?
No.
I mean, all of them.
That's only a portion, I asked that question too.
Yes.
It's about one point eight million out of the nine million, if I remember correctly what they said, is the emergency room visits. But they do have a sliding scale. I think they set up to a hundred and fifty percent of poverty line where they, they base what you pay on your ability to pay. Is that right, John? You probably know more about that. That's what I remember.
But i- an insurance company doesn't get a, that's not charitable care. If you have insurance, they, it pays.
Okay, I did ask about that piece where if you have insurance, it pays. Cause part of the problem, like you were saying, Carl, is a lot of folks, even with Medicare or medic, they have a, a fairly significant deductible before it kicks in. And they will, uh, take that piece and make it charitable before. So if, if you have a self pay portion, they'll allow that to be charitable.
Yep.
Okay, well, a motion's been made and seconded to approve that. Let's, uh, act on the motion. All in favor? Say aye.
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 All opposed? And all opposed, all say nay. But it passes. Okay, let's now look at, uh, number two, Corporation of the Episcopal Church. We were given a, a fairly sizable packet again to read through and to, uh, to review. Any discussion on this item? I think it was the, uh, it was recommended that we, um, not approve the, the Champ House for exemption, but, but the church itself, uh, for exemption. That's what we did last year. It's in, uh, I, I think it's back to the state, uh, Task Commission for Review and Appeal. And it's been recommended that we do the same this year, that we, uh, approve the church, of course, for, uh, for tax exemption as we should. But that the Champ House is in question because it's not occupied by the church and it's leased out to other entities. And so, uh, the, the recommendation of, of the, uh, the board is to do what we did in two thousand nineteen, uh, the year before and, uh, uh, not provide an exemption for the, for the Champ House. Is, are there other discuss, is there a discussion on these, on this item?
Well, I, I just want to point out that this isn't based on whether or not we think these are good people or doing good things because, um, I got in a letter from, uh, Summerfest and, and I think they feel like we're just kind of poking it at them and, but they are good people, they do good things, but that's not what this is based on. This is based on, um, that they are, it's a rentable property and therefore, um, it should be, it should be taxed. And so I just want to make clear, it's not that we don't think they're good people doing good things. It's just it doesn't qualify under what the law says.
Yeah, it's just the law.
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
This is John Luthy in the chambers.
Yes, John, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to say that I'd reviewed, uh, this and, and in particular where last year it was denied because they were using the Champ House as a source of revenue. And that's been appealed and we're waiting a decision on that appeal. We need to, I, I think that the county should hold to its position that under the law, particularly, uh, the old case Parker versus Quinn, that if the church is using the property as a source of revenue, that it, that that property is exempt. We also, the county last year denied the exemption on the other basis that Summerfest does not provide the requisite gift to the community. does not provide the requisite gift to the community, and as Councilwoman Warden has said, Summerfest is a worthwhile organization, but it was difficult for the um, county to see, uh, the requisite gift to the community. The second renter of the Champ House has changed this year. Previously, it was, um, where, I forget now the name of the prior organization. Now it's Logan Pride Foundation. And while there may be some gift to the community, they, I don't believe that they provided enough information to be, for the county to be able to tell the magnitude of that gift. And, and that's the feedback that I gave to Diana Schaefer when asked to review the, the application. And I, I think that the findings and conclusions that she's prepared are are good and adequate for the, to deny the exemption. Again, I think both organizations in the Champ House do good in the community, but where the church is receiving revenue and where the gift to the community, and that's a legal term, um, it hasn't been proven, um, for both of those reasons, the exemption shouldn't be granted for the Champ House.
Thank, thank you, John. Uh, I see that, uh, my wonderful neighbor Steve Sturgeon is on, and Janine just texted me and said that Tom Call, uh, also representing, uh, Episcopal Church is, is attending. Uh, we'll, we'll give you an opportunity to, to provide some input if, if you'd like to. Okay, I guess we'll move ahead then, uh, do we have a motion on, on this item?
I'll move, we go through with it as suggested.
Which would be the same as last year, right, John?
Correct.
And I will second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, one, one nay and, uh, six ayes, so it, it passes. That's the, uh, let's see, I see, uh, Janine just texted me and said Tom has his hand raised. Now I don't know what that means, what do I do?
We don't seem to have any audio, Tom, I see his name here.
I see it.
I, I, I see Tom with his hand raised.
Okay, I, his hand is raised, uh, Tom, uh, we, we've, uh, acted on this motion, but we'd love to hear from you if you, if you, uh, if you'd like to talk, it says talking permitted next to your name, but I'm not exactly sure what I need to do, Janine, maybe you can open it up for him.
You should be able to hear him.
Can't hear anything yet.
He's not providing an audio.
It's, he must not have an audio source.
Well, I'm not sure where to proceed from here.
Can he turn on his audio?
His audio was turned on from here.
Oh, turned on from him at home?
But that, yeah. Says talking permitted next to his name.
He's got all the avenue to come in, I'm not sure what the problem would be on his end.
Well, if, if, uh, uh, we need to exit the Board of Equalization in order to move on, but we'll allow him to, um, provide input if he can somehow uh, get his audio to work, but we'll move on at this point, is there a motion to move out of Board of Equalization?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of moving out of the Board of Equalization, say aye.
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 Thank you. And, uh, Tom, if you can, uh, somehow get into us to, to talk, we'll, we'd be glad to, glad to hear from you. Uh, we have no public hearings tonight, we have no pending action tonight. We have some initial proposals for consideration of action. Ordinance twenty twenty dash zero five amending section fifteen, uh, point zero eight, point zero three zero of the cash county code relating to the definition of fire access road. Uh, there was a, a good, and I say good because it was brief and easy to follow, uh, summary of this resolution for us, and we've, we've, uh, we discussed this in our last meeting, but, uh, yeah, it's something that we can act on at this time if, unless people have questions or, or want further discussion, I'll open it to a motion.
I'll move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty dash six.
I'll second it.
Okay, made to approve ordinance number twenty twenty dash six, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hang, hang on one second.
Okay.
Why am I not seeing a twenty dash six?
It's item twelve A on your agenda. But so it's twenty twenty oh five is what it says on the agenda.
Right.
My, mine says twenty oh six on the top of it.
Oh, six.
It should, it should be oh six.
But not the agenda.
The agenda was wrong.
Yeah, okay, because I was going to say, we, I was wondering if we're looking at two different things there, so.
I sent out a resi, a revised agenda that had the, the number six instead of five.
And my agenda's got an oh six on it, so the one I got must have been a more recent one.
And I'm on the FTP manager one, so.
Oh, I forgot, I forgot to turn that one.
Okay, sorry about that, Carl.
Oh, no, thank you, Dave, uh, are you okay with it, is your still a yes vote or a no?
No, I'm fine, yes.
Okay, okay, that, that passes then. Our next item is Resolution twenty twenty dash zero nine, approving the appointment of a representative to the Avon Cemetery District Board of Trustees. I think we already did that. Yes, and I, I should have, uh, waited and deferred to this item on the agenda. But, um, if you want to go ahead and to replace that motion and approve that resolution, that would be, be great.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and appoint, uh, Mark Williams to, uh, the Avon Cemetery Board, uh, Resolution twenty twenty oh nine.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, thank you. That's the last item on our, on our agenda, other than council member reports. We don't have any other business. Uh, so we'll start, let's see, in my screen, I've got Barbara in the upper left-hand corner, so Barbara, let's start with you.
Okay, just a report that we have starting, started the wraps, um, reviews on there, we had our first meeting, um, last Thursday over Zoom, of course. And we're starting to narrow some of those things down, we have another meeting on Friday. Um, we are cognizant of those items, those activities that were canceled for this year, but we're also cognizant of the fact that probably our revenue is going to be much less next year, um, unless things really change for the rest of the year, but, um, I'm feeling good about the process. So, Dave, what do you, what do you think?
I, I agree with you, it's, uh, we're waiting for some more feedback before some final decisions are made, that we can then bring it back to the council and let you guys look at it, so. Just want to make sure if there are the cancellations, you hate to fund something that's not going to happen this year, so.
Yeah. I think, didn't they cancel a bunch of stuff, or did they? Lee, he was struggling getting on the Zoom.
Yeah, we've, uh, we've seen the Summerfest canceled, the Logan fireworks has been canceled.
The opera.
The opera, so, yeah, the Larry Theater. So there are a lot of different, um, productions that have been canceled that way. I think some of our local theater company, companies have, have, uh, canceled or postponed some of their season, but they will still put, hopefully if, um, by the, by the fall or later on, if they can start to have productions and.
And the Summer Citizen Program has been canceled too by USU.
I see where the crews are advertising that they're going to have enough faith that they'll be able to go ahead with their activity.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
That's all I have, Carl, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, John, you're the next one on my screen.
Thanks, Barbara, that's a tough job this year, especially where a lot of stuff's getting canceled, the opera, I'm glad it's you and not me.
Well, Dave's helping with that too.
Yeah, and he's a hardliner, so that's good.
Yeah, yeah.
He likes rodeos too. You know, with the fair, they've been checking in calves and stuff, so we're just going to hope what comes to happen, I guess, is that right, Dave?
It is, right Craig, where it's in the, it's in the works, we're planning on it, so.
Good deal.
Still, we're still planning on it.
I just like. I just like the, thank you, I think you're doing a good job with COVID, uh, I don't know what's right or wrong, opening up or closing, and I think either way you'll be damn runway and damn the other way, so.
True.
You just got to make a command decision and move forward.
You have a lot of critics, you know, armchair quarterbacks are one thing, and armchair health officers are another.
Yeah.
Anything else, John?
No, just glad to be healthy.
Yes, we're glad you are too.
Yeah.
Uh, Gordy?
Well, you know, uh, here in my occupation, I can't say that there's really too much that, uh, has changed. I'm as busy as I ever was, I'm spending just as much money as I ever did. And, uh, I'm not coughing, and I, I'm glad that I'm, uh, part of society, and I'm also glad to be back and, and participating in this meeting, that's a lot easier the second and third time around than it is the very first time, so I think, um, we're doing okay, I'm not sure what, what we've got to have before we can meet, can we meet when we get to a, to a, uh, a yellow thing, or we got to go all the way to a green, I guess that'll be up to the, the Board of Health, but uh, looking forward to being with you and not just looking at your faces, and so, uh, other than that, I haven't really had too much happening. Um, heard a little bit more from the diesel, the diesel emissions people, so there's still some stuff being stirred up with that, that we'll have to address in the future, but, um, other than that, I guess we'll just continue to do the best we can as council.
Thank you, Gordy, Gina, you were, you were fairly vocal on that call at twelve thirty today.
Yeah, I have some concerns that I, I've been worried about, uh, one of the things for those that weren't on, I wanted the Lieutenant Governor to address, uh, the food chain issues that I'm hearing about, and and the concern we have for our ag, and, um, I didn't feel like those really got addressed, but I'm, I'm concerned about that, I I have long felt, as many of you know, that the economic disaster that this presents has not really been factored in to the actions being taken, that they're only looking at what the doctors are telling them, and there are other aspects to this as well that are, that are just as difficult and should get equal attention, so, yeah, I, that is how I feel, I'm very concerned about that and what's happening, and the long-term effects that we can face because of it. Um, but my report would be, um, more, uh, more positive, I guess. Uh, thirty-one hundred North, North Logan in Hyde Park, um, is, I'm really excited, it's going to make a big difference to us in this area, and it is started, they've, they've got the road, it's dirt, you know, they've, they've, I'm not know all fancy terms, they've, um, got their equipment out there, and it's a dirt road right now, and talking with Mayor Flint from Hyde Park, she said it should be done by August or before. And so this will be a new road, it's funded by the Cog, and it's from twelve hundred east to, um, four hundred east, so it will connect in with the road for Green Canyon, so that's really exciting for our area. Um, the second thing is that, uh, over the weekend, we had a, uh, state convention, for those of us who all of us belong to this party, and, um, and I thought it was really successful, and we used a, a voting app, and so Jill, if you're ever interested in hearing my perspective about how that worked, if you're interested in doing it at a county level, I would love to have that discussion with you and and let you know what my experience was as, as, uh, being part of that and, and, and being involved at that level, so.
Uh, while you're there, if you got connections, I wish they did, you know, you voted, you listened, you did all that, but then they didn't send us the results.
They never emailed the results?
I never got any, I never got any, it might have been on Facebook or something, but I never, I saw it in the paper.
Had to go in the mail to get it, but it was never, it's never posted on the app like we did in the county, I was kind of waiting for that too.
Yeah.
I will make a note of that, and I will let them know that there should have been a better way, they did a Facebook Live, but yeah, you're right, they didn't send it out another way, so I will make mention of that for sure.
For those, for those of us who don't use Facebook, it's not a good communication, a method.
I agree, definitely, that's all I had, thank you.
I, I think I was probably the exception, but I, the votes app worked really well for me for the county, but but the state, I had to wait a couple of days, and I, and I, uh, actually called the number that they provided, and Gina, like you suggested, I, I pressed the seven where I got the, the actual company representatives that did the troubleshooting, and I think they figured out that somehow, uh, my voting district in Smithfield, when I changed, had been, had been added wrong, and so, it, so they, after a couple of days, I was able to vote, I'm glad that they left it open long enough for a lo, a long enough period that, that those problems could be worked out, but after, after that all got worked out, it's, it was smooth, some voting was, turned out really well.
I had to call in like you did.
I had, I had a problem with mine, that, uh, they didn't even recognize me, and we had to call in the number. And what they finally found out is that Cindy and I were both, uh, delegates for the county, and, uh, we had the same, uh, email address, and so they wouldn't provide us with any information, and so then, and we had to work it out that we, we had to change one of our emails so that we were separate, and then we were able to get through, but it was a little frustrating, because he, I called the number and way late at night, the guy finally called me back, and I told him what was wrong, and he said, okay, we can fix that, do it in the morning, and so anyway, I expected to be there when I got up the next morning, it didn't come till ten o'clock, and by that time I'd almost given up on it, but we eventually, both of us voted, and it turned out okay.
Well, Cindy said they didn't need to worry when they called her, because she did what she, she told you anyway. She just write down two, they just do hers twice.
Yeah, she might have voted two or three times for Alito, but.
She didn't, I'll go check, but I, I don't think she did.
Well, Gina, I think you did a great job with that.
Yeah.
I appreciate that so much. It was a team effort.
I was happy when we could look at that, that one, that ended in a little while, we could see the county told us who'd won in, in the votes and all that, but I kept waiting to have it posted on the state one, it never did ever get posted.
I like how you could hear all the talkers, I liked, I thought it went well, other than I didn't get to see who won.
True.
Dave, what have you got for us?
I thought that convention was, uh, extremely good. It was nice to hold the convention on my time, it was, it's where you go watch the videos, when you can watch the videos, you, I thought that was pretty downright sweet, rather than the whole day down in Salt Lake trying on t-shirts, okay?
Getting a parking ticket.
Yeah, I, I, serious, I, I really enjoyed that process, I really did. Uh, I thought, I thought I had not. I thought, I thought I had an opportunity to bet more, the people more than just a one-day, you know, one-day process. It was really interesting how a lot of them, they knew exactly that so many people who hadn't voted by, you know, at a certain time and and then all those candidates were just bombarding them. You know, and having people call them and reminding them and getting them going and that and you wouldn't have ever had that process of, you know, who would have actually attended down at the convention down there. I think that we got a lot more people voting this way than if you would have had a convention down there. So, anyway. I had one question and then Craig, maybe you've heard some details on this. One question I had was have we heard anymore about maybe the mayors getting together on this COG money?
Yes, yes, we had a meeting yesterday.
Okay.
And we, they voted to go ahead with the Providence that funding and put that towards the county project there in Richmond. And so that is the recommendation that's going to be coming to the council at the next meeting.
Okay, I just wondered if that process had hit a wall or if it was still in the works, so.
I apologize for not reporting on that. I should have brought that up in my report, but
You're fine.
That meeting was held and the vote was taken yesterday and and apparently Providence has got their ducks in a row. They'll be reapplying this coming funding cycle. And that's going to happen probably within the next six months. We, since this this 2019 schedule has been kind of derailed. It's finding it back on track and, but these two cycles will be pretty close together because of that.
And I thought Cameron's report on the sales taxes, I thought that was excellent. I'm not excited to see the next one.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, that you look at really what's happened there and then all of a sudden you go ouch, you know, the
Yeah.
These next couple, yeah, it's going to hurt. I don't think we're going to hit our budget on that.
If you've driven by lows or have been gone to low.
IFA.
I think some of them, I think some of these businesses have probably surpassed previous sales, but it'll be interesting to see how those figures all show up.
Yep. And then I think, yes, we are still going ahead with the fair and we're still getting all that planning process and getting it going. We will need we will need a celebration about middle of summer. We, the county and everything, I think we really, we will need something like that just to, hey, to celebrate. And so I think it's really important that we keep that on track and keep going. There might be some limitations, but I I think it's still a good thing and I'm hoping other you know, other events and that, as we start opening up, I'm hoping that they'll also start looking ahead and start getting their planning because we're going to be needing a lot of that, not just financially, but just mentally, you know, for us as a community. Yeah, so Barbara, right down here.
If we can all attend the cruising and that and that be kind of the first big one around that we're all able to go to, that's going to happen, just like we're saying, Dave, it's going to be good for the community.
Yes.
But I assume we'll cancel the county party though. I don't know. For the employees, you know.
That's a good question. I, I've thought about that, but I haven't really given it a lot of thought, so that's probably the second week in July.
Yeah, July.
It'll probably depend a lot on if the Logan Aquatic Center is open. And there's, I think they're having a meeting today or tomorrow on the state level to determine what they're going to do as far as opening pools, swimming pools things, so. If that's open, I think we may go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
Martin.
Let's go ahead with it if we can.
Yeah. I agree.
Anyway, those are just a couple of things that I had written down. Barbara, you are prophetic. We are all, we have all been involved in the pandemic. In your first words as you started, and it is whether we want to or not, we have all been involved and a lot of people have stepped up to help and I think that's, it's an amazing it's amazing that that we're still all real as positive as we are. It's a lot of negativity out there, but I I think we'll probably get through it weakened, but also maybe opportunities to strengthen, I think will really, really will be out there for a lot of us. If we just keep, keep that positive note and say, let's look to the future and get going, so. That's it, Carl.
All right, thanks, Dave. Paul, you're the last one.
And I apologize, I've been having technical issues, so I don't know if my internet connection works very well.
Well, we see you the whole time and now we can hear you.
Okay, good. Well, I just wanted to say thank you to Cameron and echo kind of what Dave and Gina Barber were talking about. I think the county's in a pretty good financial position, rainy day funding all. I was looking at where we are, but from a budget perspective, anything we could do to be cognizant of that, because not only you know, are the sales tax revenues going to probably start dropping in March with all these other things being canceled, the more conservative we could be in planning and budgeting for this year, the better. I think we'll make it through, but like Dave said, it'll be, we'll make it through by the hair of our chinny chin chin, so.
Well, you've got plenty of that hair, so we should be okay. Don't shave that beard off. We'll be relying on you. All right, anything else from anyone? All right, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.